I've got some ideas for him. From the south. Right along the coast. Did you call that thing? Yeah, I could try to make another part of it.
General. Oh yeah. Of course, there are issues with, um, security. Yeah, 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 that's why I'm like. It's not as long as, yeah. The very least, what he said this time, that he's a pastor. Thanks. He only got a city project, his assistant city parish. Last I see, parish council declined to set up a new church. The party is a function of the regulation. So, they're just, the party of parish council and the city.
Hmm. But let me tell you, the church. There are no secrets. Yeah, the presidency. It's kind of relinquished. It's like.
Yeah. Well, when I was saying to you, gee.
Good. Parish, uh, maybe give me two.
System. And all right. Gee.
I'm not.
Yeah, well, yeah. I lost my mind. I'm back to work. I'm killing to bury.
I am. That's something I got to tell you. I said, uh, I said, you, you, you got to. Here's people got to boot in the car. I agree, I said, God, you should have that kind of. I supposed to do something nice so y'all can hear it.
You know. Kill them.
Alright.
Please, 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 please. I think that's, that's. Come on, man. That's all I, I just want to say.
Alright.
Well, you. I don't know. It's true, too.
Yeah, it's, this is the challenge. See.
This, I was.
Yeah. See, well. Such a big, big change in. Mayor, um, very, very disgusting case before. New physical begin was not. And he's saying. She has, she has to do today.
Hmm.
To see it, we got to. We have to be a person, and the front state will be insufficient. More relation to the council, 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 council. This section now, we're indicating to us. This is, okay, that's any immediate action taken. So, that's to get this done. Yeah, section eight. Some sections shall intake such other actions as due.
Oh, you mean that one, too, am I here?
Hmm.
Section. Wait, two. This shit.
This is. You'd be the guy.
Well, one of, one of several. Some of the several.
I mean, how much?
Yeah. Right. They should be.
So, we're going to turn. Alright. I don't know. Oh, well, then. Oh, oh, oh. I hope by two o'clock, we're just.
They only meant to get us.
I said. Oh, no. In the last time.
I'll break you.
Yeah, bro. Yeah, I'm gonna get the side of you. I'm ready.
She's made. He said. Don't be, so, do you know the man?
Look, you see, I thought. Much trouble. They did it right. They're trying. Well, they're trying to see. What? Don't want to call. If, if, or, still in the presidency. What a styro language. Presidency, the soul of man. Make his room. They would have some.
In the whole, we tried to say. Many, many times, but it's such a, it's such a, it's a. Trying to stop some of them. But the charge of the author, ownership, who, once the city council.
But the emergency.
Look, you break them, see me? Operation. You would have seen, parish government, that is funded solely by the city, um.
But that's one of the. Now, we. Oh.
Oh, yes.
I believe, yes. It's, it's.
I think they got a, you know, what exhibition?
This is on stage. The festival, you know, just funded. Boy, to the city council.
But I don't know if it number about split and you watch.
You can't do it. So, it's a good, man.
Well, it's the whole.
You step down with God.
It depends. There's not much. In. So, that's the part to do. I think it is a quick.
You listen. Vacation. I don't know.
He's not sure. We just, we just say. That's what they kind of do, yeah. Oh, you know what? Kind of makes you ready yet to just law.
Okay. I was thinking about him, didn't I?
I can't. Can't, 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 you know?
Why do you need to require United States? One nation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Mr. Andy Nakane. We welcome you to the city council meeting. As presiding officer and chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker card or call in to three, three, seven, two, nine, one, eight, four, two, eight. To submit your information to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistant is available. Items for submission to the council should be handed to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontation of statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolutions and not by robust rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourage your involvement in boards or commissions. If interested, call two, nine, one, eight, eight, zero, zero, two, nine, one, eight, eight, zero, zero. I have no announcement. If, if you call two, nine, one, eight, four, two, eight prior to reading of item, you will be contacted to speak during public comments portion of the agenda item for which you signed up to speak. Item number thirty-six, airport commission appointment. This appointment is being withdrawn from, from consideration. I would like to wish a happy birthday to Mr. Paul Escott, City Parish Assistant Attorney, who will be celebrating his birthday on August fourteenth.
Happy birthday, Paul.
Okay. Any council announcements? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to clarify the airport commission. Um, this particular commission is not being appointed at this time. Um, this, the commissioner, current commissioner, is very involved with the airport terminal, which is a very huge project. He has been involved with it since day one and was asked by the director of the airport if he could remain on the commission until completion of the project. So, he is going to be, um, remaining on that for eighteen months, which is hopefully when the project will be completed, which is why at this time we were not, we were not appointing someone new. Um, he's, uh, Mr. Paul Gilbo, he's been involved with the airport commission, um, for, you know, his full term. He is also a former employee of D O, D O T D. So, he has been very instrumental in a lot of the contract work that the airport commission has had to do, um, to, to, to keep this terminal project moving forward. So, he's, he has been very instrumental in this as well. So, to keep the continuity, because they're so close to, to finalizing this, that, that was the request from the airport director, uh, per se. So, we are honoring that request, but understand that this is not for a full, full, full year term. It strictly is going to be to the completion of the project and, and upon completion, um, a new commissioner, uh, the resumes will go out again, the, the word will go out, there's a board opening, and we will, we will appoint someone new to that commission. So, I just wanted to clear that up in case anybody, um, in the audience or in the public was confused by that. So, um, thank you, Chairman, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Uh, I'd like to recognize Mayor President, uh, Hillary right now for his, uh, report.
Thank you, Chairman. For comparison, a major city funds for June twenty twenty preliminary, and it has been submitted to the council for your review prior to this meeting. If you have any questions, we do have our CFO here.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to executive session. Cindy, please read.
Shayna Darby versus Lafayette Consolidated Government at Al, fifteenth Judicial District Court, docket number C twenty seventeen fifty-five fifty-six C, the state of Louisiana, Parish of Lafayette.
Legal, can you explain why we need to go into exec, executive session, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This matter involves pending litigation in which LCG is a party, and because of the nature of the claims and defenses asserted in this litigation, it's my opinion that discussion of the litigation in open session will have a detrimental effect on the litigation or the bargaining position of LCG in the litigation. For that reason, it's my opinion that an executive session is permissible and appropriate for discussion of the litigation, and I recommend that the council go into executive session for that purpose.
Okay, I need a second, a motion, a second to enter into the, motion by Ms. Liz Ebert, second by Ms. Lynette Cook. Any, uh, council discussion? I see none, Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call to go into executive session.
District one.
Yes.
District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Okay, we'll take a few minutes and we'll, I don't know how long, but we'll be right back. Be patient.
Need a motion and second to return from executive session. Motion by Ms. Liz Ebert, second by Ms. Nanette Cook, any council discussion? Ms. William, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the return from executive session.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Need a motion and second to accept legal recommendation. Motion by Mr. Nakane, second by Ms. Liz, I mean second by Ms. Nanette Cook, council discussion. Ms. William, any public comments?
No, sir.
Need a vote to accept legal recommendation.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Cindy, please read item number six.
Update Republic Services Recycling Contamination.
Okay, Ms. Ebert, Ms. Cook, you guys have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Do we have anyone from Republic here?
I see Chuck.
There he is, come on down.
Chuck is here.
And then Bess, are you still here? Yes, either one.
Either one.
Yeah, you can use the memo. You have a little presentation. He's got a little video.
In March, we, I, I don't know if my fellow council members got a call, but I got a call from Republic in March as we were going into the COVID kind of high alert, everyone's going home, no one's going to work, phase one. So, of course, we all did what we would do when we're families, we find projects to keep us busy and cleaning out our house, cleaning out our garages, which caused a lot more trash go at the street, things like that. Republic told me that there was a lot more contamination than there has ever been in their trucks for recycling specifically, and that there may be, there may be a need to go up on our rates. And I said absolutely not, we don't need to do that. We have, we received dollars, for the public to know, we received dollars from Republic as per our contract for education to the community. So, I suggested that before they go and increase our bill, that they would need to get with LCG to start discussions on how do we educate the public on exactly what can go in recycling? Because even though I'm a big believer in recycling, there's things that I learn on occasion of what you can and cannot put in the trash can. Fast forward, I guess, two, three weeks ago, I got a call from Republic again saying they were still not seeing improvement, if anything, they felt it was getting worse. So, they were going to have to go up on our bill. And so, in asking, because I haven't seen any kind of education on my trash can, I reached out and found that we have not, we have not started the education portion of recycling education to the residents. So, I know Councilwoman Cook, I believe, and I'm not going to speak for you, is that you and I are having a similar issue on this. So, I wanted to have a discussion on that, as well as starting the discussion. I know the RFPs for the next recycling and trash contract are going to be coming up quick as time flies by. And maybe recycling at every single household isn't what the community wants or needs. So, maybe that's something we need to start discussing, or possibly Republic needs to start seeing who are the repeat offenders and removing their recycling can from them and perhaps switching it out with a regular trash can. So, those are sort of the things that I wanted to have a discussion about. So, maybe Bess, let me first ask you, what's the plan for getting the information out to the public on the correct way to recycle so we're not contaminating?
Well, the grant money that just got approved is going to play a huge part in that. And the, the, the plan is that we're going to use that money to purchase stickers that I actually have a copy of. I, I don't know if you all got it, I've made copies of my PowerPoint so that people would have the handouts in case I didn't start it up. But every recycling cart is going to get a sticker that has what we want in the recycling cart and what we don't. And it's as clear a way as we can get it out there, so that's one step of it. We're going to be utilizing some traditional, you know, media with, you know, doing commercials, billboards, bus stops, signs, signage at bus stops, getting out to the news media, doing all those types of things to say, this is coming, this is what we're doing. And then the meatiest part of it really is that actual looking in the cart. And if you have something in there that you shouldn't, like if you don't know that you're recycling, you shouldn't be bagged. Or if you don't know that you shouldn't have a greasy pizza box in there, or whatever. It's called an oops tag. And you will get that, that is very specific for what is in your cart, so that you'll get some education that way, too. So, it's the sticker and the oops tag is the biggest part of what we're trying to do. And we, we chose this because looking at other communities, it's been successful. Looking at, we did a little, a smaller version of this about a year ago, where we did a card audit for four weeks. And we got the contamination level down in those homes, changing from sometimes as high as 70, 60, 50% down to around 5% with this method over four weeks. And so, we're really got some high hopes for this, that this is going to work. And getting the refresher, you know, everybody did get a card in 2016. And I think some, the education that was done then, those cards look exactly alike, except for the lids. You know, at nighttime, people may, you know, could just think they're the same cart. You know, I think we really have to just let people know that we want, you know, how we want that recycling, how it needs to be for it to actually not end up in the landfill and to be recycled like it should. And once we have this data, I think that's another big part of this, is that all part of the grant, too, is that we have an app that we're going to be able to use, that we're going to know what's being contaminated the most, where's the contamination happening the most. So, that after this four-week endeavor of the audit, we'll know, we need to go spot check these areas. We need to do some additional education, like reminding everybody, you know, we, you know, the plastics that go in there, this is what we need, not, you know, the tanglers and the bags and those types of things that really cause problems. And so, we can use the data that we collect to do a better job with the education moving forward, too. So, that, so that we keep the program at that level of contamination rate where it needs to be. It needs to be, for sure, less than 20% for it to be making, you know, that's the commodity that, that recycling is, that they get all of that good plastic and paper and metal that they can use to then, it becomes a commodity.
And don't we receive, I appreciate that we just voted on a grant.
Yeah.
And that's great, but don't we receive recycling dollars from Republic?
Yes, and our match of that grant is money that we're getting from Republic. We get $15,000 a year, and so, in that grant, the matching funds that we're doing is, our share is $48,000, and that is all the Republic money that, that we have received. It rolls over. We've done some, we, we were working with an ad agency where we did some commercials and did some other things. And so, we've had that money banked a little bit, kind of waiting for something a little larger to do. And so, yes, that is the money that we're utilizing as a match for the grant. The recycling partnership is giving us $36,000, including that app. And we're using $48,000 of the money that we get from Republic as part of the contract for education, correct?
Okay, all right, so we couldn't start until now because we've been holding on that money to be able to?
Right, and the grant, we've been working on this grant since before the virus, before COVID. And that kind of slowed things down, too, a little bit, to where getting it finalized with the, they're out of state. This is a national organization, and so, just working with them, that slowed things down a little bit, too. But yeah, those Republic funds are very needed, and we are utilizing them, so we're thankful.
All right, perfect, yeah, because I definitely don't, I definitely don't want LCG or my constituents to have to pay additional costs until we, until we can start this education process. I'm going to ask that we do not increase the rates to our taxpayers, to our residents, until we get enough significant time for people to be educated on what they can and cannot recycle. So, I appreciate your help with that. And, and I think I'm going to yield to Councilwoman Cook right now, but thank you.
Somebody's before me.
No, you next, go ahead.
Okay, I have a floor, okay, all right, thank you. And I'm actually, I'm excited about this grant, I'm excited about the program. And I'm hoping, from what you're telling me in other places that have used this procedure, and what we've done before with it, that it's really going to help, so that we can get to hopefully that 20% mark. And when you're talking about the oops tag, I, I'm going to tell on myself, because I want people, some people, in fact, it wasn't just me, there were a couple of other people that actually did not know this, but you should not be bagging your recyclables. And so, I took a tour, thank you very much, to the center, and, and saw all these bags coming out and was, you know, was being fussed at for putting stuff in bags. So, thank you, Chuck, for, for educating me. But that is something that I think maybe the public is not aware of, because there are a whole lot of bags in that recycling bin. So, that's a very important part of it, not to bag it, so they can see what is contaminated, what's in there. So, whether it's contaminated or not. But, but I do look forward to hearing what those results are, and I'm hoping we can get to what we need to, because I will echo what my Councilwoman friend said about the rates. We, if we, we do not want to raise the rates. And I think if we actually do the education and we get it down to where it needs to be, we can have a successful recycling program. And so, just, I would ask that you really, you know, keep us posted on it as it goes along. And when you start, when you start it, we'd like to know when to get started, and kind of keep us, keep us up, up to date with it, if you would. Will do. Okay, all right, that's all I had.
Ms. Ebert?
And Chuck, is there a way that your drivers can identify the, the repeat offenders? Because again, I don't want the people who are doing the right thing and recycling correctly to be penalized for those who just don't care or, and are continuously being repeat offenders, even after all the hard work that you guys do. So, maybe add that into your presentation, because that's the only question I have, but go ahead and introduce yourself.
Oh, hey, good evening, I am Chuck Lagrange, I'm the Municipal Manager for Republic Services. Very happy to be here this evening to talk to you guys about recycling. Before I begin, I, I just want to say thank you. As you all mentioned, COVID-19 has had an, I don't think it's, it's left any stone unturned as we, as, as we go through this. But I want to thank both councils, I want to thank Public Works, their officials. I want to thank the mayor and the mayor's office for working with us through this pandemic. Look, it, it impacts everybody for us, Liz mentioned it, you know, we are seeing more material being put out on the residential side, as folks have to stay at home, shelter in place. Additional hours on the routes, more material, takes more time to pick up. Trucks have got to come on and off route more often. And we're seeing tonnages, you know, as high as 30% above where they normally are. And we appreciate you guys helping us to just communicate those things to your constituents, our customers, as we go through this process. And just, you know, let folks know that, you know, just exercise a little bit of patience, we're going to get there. It may not be when, usually when, you know, you're expecting it, but we will get there. So, we absolutely thank you guys for your partnership and your work in helping us to get through this. Hopefully, we'll come out of it real soon, but just thank you for that. I don't have cats in my presentation this evening. But I can tell you about some tonnage, and again, this was touched upon. The chart you're seeing here is, are the amount of tons we collect from recycling every month. Typically, we're around the 400, 430, 450 range. And as you could tell, since COVID, we've blown way through that. And, and the little orange boxes indicate the contamination levels. What we're finding is, you know, when folks' garbage cans are getting full, some of that stuff is making its way to the recycling container. And a lot of that is contributing to the, to a lot of the contamination and the extra contamination that, that we're seeing. The acceptable level is 15%. I can tell you, we are working very hard with our facility in Baton Rouge to try to bump that number up, potentially as high as 25%. I don't want to make any promises, but you know, you know, we'd like to get something a little bit higher, if we can. Certain numbers are very hard to achieve. And a lot of this is related to markets, a lot of this is related to when China pulled out of the, the recycling system, so to speak, and the world lost 40% of its capacity to process essentially overnight. That's tough to replace for anybody. So, we are working towards that, but from a numbers perspective, we, we have seen 100-ton swing since that time. I, I was hoping to have the July numbers for you guys, we're putting some final touches on that, but I can definitely provide that to council after this meeting as well. So, you know, pictures are a great way to, to tell a story. On the left, you're going to see what recycling should look like. You can see it's clean, you can make out the commodities, the cardboard, the plastics, the paper. And then the picture at the bottom is what's not recyclable. And, and, and this is an actual picture of one of our route trucks from LCG. You can see garbage bags in there, you can see how the material is just very dirty. Again, it does not take long for a, a couple of bad apples to spoil the bunch. When, when you got a vehicle picking up garbage, when you got a vehicle picking up anything that has food waste in it, liquid yard waste, when that vehicle is, is going around the route, when it's going through the cycling of systems and that material gets moved up and down and sideways, it is not hard for that stuff, all the good stuff, to get quickly contaminated. And so, the efforts of the folks that want to do the right thing unfortunately get sidetracked by, you know, those containers that have the, you know, high contamination levels. And then so, again, these are pictures that kind of give you a better idea of what it should look like versus what it looks like. And, you know, we can't ignore the fact that there are costs associated with this. From a collection perspective, obviously, you know, transportation, these vehicles staying longer on route, I mentioned the 100-ton swing, the labor behind that, the contamination fees that you have to pay when you do bring it to a facility for processing. And then on the processing side, there's no material to market if they don't get anything. Republic is very blessed in the fact that, you know, we have the only processing facility in the state of Louisiana, it's right there in Baton Rouge. And so, we've made an investment in that to help keep the rates as low as they are. But if they don't have any material, then obviously, that facility cannot run at optimal capacity. So, you've got downtime, you've got machinery downtime, and that picture is actually a, a good example of what happens when plastic bags and different things get caught up in the equipment. It can literally shut down a facility for a day, it can break a lot of those, they're called discs, a lot of those different instruments, and, and they're quite expensive to change when you do do that. And for those folks who, who maybe have never seen how a recycling facility works, the first part of our process is manual. We have workers that, there's a conveyor belt, and, and they try to take as much of the contamination out. Because even if you get it at the 15 and 20% range? out, because even if you get it at the 15 and 20% range, one of the mechanisms, or what the MRF does, the recovery facility, is to reduce that contamination even further, because when it goes to market, it has got to be practically no contamination. So these workers try to get a lot of this material out, and I've visited since COVID, and prior to COVID, and I can tell you, that's not a job I'd want. A lot of times, you see plastic items that people think are recyclable but are really hazardous, so we found things like syringes, diabetic needles, we found medical tubing, IV bags, those sorts of things in addition to the other stuff, and you know, with COVID, it's one of those things where you don't want to touch, it's your job, but what do you do? So it's, you know, there's, like I said, COVID has had a lot of consequences, and those things are one, plus the other thing is, is education, we touched on it, just because it has plastic doesn't mean it's recyclable. And then finally, just to kind of talk about where we want to get, look, this is a partnership, we want to work with you guys, we're thankful that you've worked with us and continue to work with us through this pandemic, but what we want at the end is a durable and sustainable model, and all you guys touched on, we're excited for this campaign, we want to get this data, you know, we want to see some results out of this. It's not a short race, if you will, and it's going to take some time, and we're committed to try to get it right. As Liz and then folks have mentioned, you know, we do provide funding for education, and we look forward to using some of those funds as part of this larger project. Republic does have a very good website, recycling simplified.com, which has tremendous amount of resources, very short videos on how to recycle, what you can and can't recycle, it even has, for teachers who are interested in curriculum, kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, so for those folks that are interested, it is available, and a lot of the material, best mentioned, some of the graphics and different information is borrowed from this site. So if I can leave you with anything, it's that, folks, please, let's start to recycle right, let's not bag anything, empty, clean, dry is kind of where we're going. The rule of thumb now, if it's smaller than a credit card, you probably don't want to put it in there, because it'll just fall through a lot of the machinery. Your basic commodities are accepted, plastics, and the easy thing with that is a screw top or a neck is the best way to identify it, cardboard, paper, aluminum metals, those sorts of things, we very much want. But other than that, that concludes my presentation this evening.
I have a question, how do you guys plan on educating the people? What do y'all have in place for education?
Currently, right now, we don't have anything specific for Republic, we provide those resources per the contract to Lafayette Public Works to do the education, and as they come up with methods, obviously, we support them, they get with us to develop a lot of things, and so we rely on Public Works to do that sort of education. I can tell you, one of the things we have started, that's a little bit different, and we're still waiting on the development of the flyers to get to the office, but when we deliver containers, that's an easy opportunity to include a flyer in there, to tell people just not, you know, what kind of, you know, how to put out your garbage, where to go for resources, but places, it's a perfect opportunity to educate them about recycling too, what you can and cannot put in there. As I mentioned before, we have this website that can be used, and if you have any questions, the LCG website is a great source as well, and you can always call Republic Services, 337-806-2040, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have about recycling.
Mr. Nakim.
Mr. Lagrange, thank you for coming.
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate all y'all do for this community, because you give them back, as a company, a lot more than just this. I mean, y'all contribute to a lot of nonprofits, a lot of festivals, a lot of functions, y'all put a lot of your services out there for people at no charge in various areas, and not just in Lafayette, but in all of Catiana, and I want to thank you for that, but this is an important, very important topic for you as a business, because essentially, y'all aren't making any money on this, that $2.68 is a loss for y'all. So we're getting a deal here in Lafayette, when you think about it, but we just don't cooperate and do it right, and that's a shame, and it takes work, it takes work to recycle. Mr. Lagrange and I had that discussion the other day, I mean, I'll probably spend an hour at the recycling bin total during the course of a week at least, stripping boxes with packing tape, removing staples out of periodicals, things that would make their job better and safer, and hopefully more efficient, to where I'm not contaminating the recyclables, and you have boxes to get rid of, well, break them down. If you have to get a utility knife and cut them into smaller pieces and leaves, that'll fit in your container, you'd be surprised how much you can put in there if you break it down, it's simple. Things like these bottles, okay? I know Mr. Lagrange doesn't want a bottle put in like that by the top, and why is that, Mr. Lagrange?
Well, I guess you can, we could probably, look, here's the thing, if you put that in there, we'll take it all day versus household garbage, but you know, we prefer not to.
But that becomes a projectile.
It does.
When it goes through the crusher, it'll shoot, it'll hit somebody, and believe me, it can do some damage if it hits you in the wrong places, so if you dispose of it, you would separate it and throw it justice away, what would you do with the top?
You can put that, you know, in the garbage.
In the garbage container, not loose. Now, if you take the bottle and crush it, satisfactory?
Absolutely.
There you go, simple solution, you know, and I'm not a strong man, that was easy to do.
I have to say I'm impressed.
Thank you. Mom, I hope you saw that. But Chuck, this is a simple solution to this major problem, and it's a matter of participation. People wanting and willing to do what is right, not only for themselves, but their family, their kids, their generations to come behind them, this is an opportunity to help do something together as a group, where we can really pull together and accomplish some good for this city, this community, this parish, this state, this world. Chuck, thank you for your time, I appreciate you coming, and good luck with the education. If you need me in any way to help in any way, I'll sit there and do a video on how to cut boxes if you need it. Thank you, buddy.
I'll let Beth know.
Thank you, thank you, Beth. Senate, please read item number seven.
Update on Lafayette Utility System Investigation.
Okay, Ms. Lazar, you have the floor.
Do we have anybody here from?
My apologies, I don't know if you called for public comment, and I went and talked to Paul for a second, we do have one public speaker, Marcia Dorsey, under the Republic. She's coming up.
I appreciate the time you've extended me for my comment. I'm here to oppose an increase in Republic. I am a member of the Lafayette City Community, and for the past two weeks, outside my door, I have been watching this family who got evicted, stuff piled up on the sidewalk, we called Republic 14 times to come pick it up, and it stayed there for two weeks. In terms of recycling, the trash can showed up one day, no explanation, no rhyme or rhyme, no reason, and then it showed up on our bill. I don't see where they contribute to our community. I watched a Republic driver, when she got out of the truck and expected the trash, I guess she was looking for something good, I don't know. But before you can come to the council and ask for money, you need to figure out and determine how you can support the community who's paying those fees. I saw a rat, there was a graduation cake on the ground, food taken from the refrigerator, people pulled all through the trash, I don't want to live in that neighborhood. And until they can contribute something positive to us, you really want us to stand there and sort your trash when you can't pick up ours? Really? Please, I don't like to live in garbage or squalor, and I think that they need to seriously consider how they're going to educate my community on recycling trash, and maybe we can educate them on how to pick it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lazar, you have the floor.
No, Ms. Cook.
Oh, Lynette has a, okay, go ahead, Ms. Cook.
I just wanted to clear it up, that, you know, we called Republic here just so that we could really pursue the education, just what you're asking for, and we don't want to raise, we don't want to raise rates either, so we're opposed to that too, so I just wanted to make sure. Raising rates, we're opposed to that too. Rates, yeah, so that's, I just wanted to clear that up, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, President.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, I believe, was it Ms. Dorsey, is that your name?
Yes, Ms. Dorsey.
Ms. Dorsey, okay, Ms. Dorsey, I appreciate you coming up, and we encourage this dialogue. Just one tool that's available is the council, so that's good, and because I bet you, there's a lot of people that experience exactly what you're going through, and we won't hear it, Republic won't hear it unless you voice it, so thank you for doing that. And the second thing, I just want everybody to know, there is a tool available, it's new, so we might not be, might not be used to it, but 311, it's a great way to be able to express your concerns, be able to show us, I believe that website is 311 Lafayette 311Lafayette.Services, 311Lafayette.Services. The reason why I'm saying that is, you can take a picture and upload it, and you heard the phrase, a picture says a thousand words, so just like Ms. Dorsey, I'm telling you, she's not the only one going through this, this is healthy for us to have this dialogue, but also, if you can, on your way out, or maybe during the meeting, if you come and get your address and information to our CAO, we may be able to assist a little further, so I appreciate you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Lazar, try it again, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, can we call out Mr. Logan, please?
Yes, sir.
Oh, he's right there. Good evening, Mr. Logan, once again. I put this on the agenda for two reasons, one, as a follow-up to our discussion from the last council meeting, and I must admit that I was, and I think several of the other council members were as well, were shocked at the revelation that the purported missing emails had actually been discovered shortly after the request for the investigation was made. And if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the emails were a key factor in the request for the investigation. Would that be a?
They were one factor, they were one of many factors.
Okay, but they were a key factor, am I correct? Would that be a correct assertion? An important factor or a major factor?
Okay, not a major factor, one of many.
So the missing emails were not, you wouldn't consider that to be a key factor in the allegations? I mean, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, you know, I'm going by correspondence that we had received previously, you know, the initial letter that was sent requesting the investigation, and the, that's what I'm going by.
Okay, no.
And it was listed as, you know.
I'll go with key factor, but not a major factor, there are still, there were still a lot of other issues in that letter.
Okay.
Dealing with public records besides the emails.
Okay, and last, we kind of talked a little bit about how the emails were discovered as it pertains to servers or whatever.
Okay.
Can you kind of, and I'm asking this question because it's been asked of me a lot, and obviously, this is a matter of grave public interest and concern. So the process, and I don't want to get into the litigation part of it, well, I didn't mean the investigation part, I would understand that part, but the process in which the missing emails were discovered, can you kind of enlighten us on that a little bit?
Yes, there were LUS employees that came forward to tell us they knew where some of those emails were right after. The key is, the emails were not where they were supposed to be, and suspiciously, it was 2011 that the emails weren't filed where they were supposed to be. We had to go searching for them after LUS employees told us where they were. Some of them were in a Barracuda software application at LUS, not in the LCG archive of where they were supposed to be. And I'm a lawyer, I'm not a computer technician.
Neither am I, I'm in the same position you're in from that standpoint, so it's kind of, kind of disconcerting to me personally that we weren't updated, you know, at some point during the process, as to what the status of the investigation was, and exactly where we were in the investigation.
We immediately met with the state police and the district attorney and provided them the information, they told us that we would have to continue investigating and find the information, because they did not have the resources. The district attorney, as a prosecutorial agency, took control of the investigation, not the state police, we were very surprised by that. We also turned over, at that first meeting, a jump drive or USB flash drive with the additional emails, so it was discussed with them from the outset. We didn't want to taint the investigation, we wanted them to do the investigation, we did not want to do the investigation in the media or in the public.
No, I wasn't referring to the media and the public, I meant just keeping the council abreast as to, as to where we were, because it has been going on for some time, you know, and.
The majority of the investigations being conducted by the independent forensic auditors that the council approved us engaging, we provided the information to them, they have been doing the investigation. As the latest report, they should have their, the latest report I have from them and from our CFO, Ms. Toops, they should have their completed report to us no later than Monday next week.
So we expect a completed report?
That's what I'm expecting, based on the best information I have.
Okay.
We have not been involved in the investigation, they're independent, we provide them information when they request it, so until they, we don't want to, again, we don't want to taint their independent forensic audit.
Okay, I just need to make sure that we, and we can keep the public abreast of where we are, and I'm glad we're doing this, where we are, because like I said, there are more questions than answers at this point, obviously, so it's really just keeping the public abreast as to where we are in the investigation, what the status of it is, and what we expect next logical steps to be, you know, as we proceed. As far as the criminal investigation is concerned.
Correct.
Has the, have we provided at this point the district attorney's office with all the information that we have that could assist them in hopefully reaching a conclusion pretty soon?
We've provided them all of the information we have, we are waiting for the summary provided, or the report to be provided by the forensic auditor.
So they are waiting for that?
I assume they're waiting for that, we told them it is coming.
Okay, can we, can we follow up on that and just let us know as a council, as to, you know, as to whether or not that's the actual situation or not?
Follow up with the district attorney, as to if they're waiting for that report or not?
Yeah, yeah, we'd just like to know, I think.
Certainly.
And, something else, oh, when NewGen, the consulting engineers that we. When NewGen, the consulting engineers that we terminated the contract with, right, the consulting engineers that we've been using previously, I think when they responded, were we supposed to respond to their response by July 10th or something of that nature? Was there some July 10th date in there?
I believe Mr. Marino with Otsu Marino, who handles the L.U.S. division and actually has been dealing with that, did respond to them, but I'm not certain.
Okay.
I think they gave us a date to respond, or they were going to release a report.
Right.
We released what they had to the media. The media had it, so it was like, if you don't respond, we're going to release this. Well, we have nothing to hide, so it was released.
But still, can we verify whether or not we did respond?
I'll do that tomorrow, yes.
And provide us with that information?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm done.
Ms. Hebert?
So, you mentioned that the forensic audit will be given to us. I assume that means administration. Who is "us" on Monday?
I would think the administration and the council around the same time, instantaneous. I don't think it'll be held up at the administration.
Okay. I didn't know. So, Lori, you're not...
I don't know what those plans are, but that's what I would think.
Okay. So, I'm asking Lori, is... Can you buzz Lori in, please?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. So, they are going to email the council and the administration, or is that how we're receiving it?
I believe that is how we're receiving it, but I'm assuming that...
We all know what assuming does, though.
Right.
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 Can you make Josh?
Counsel. Does that help?
Say that again.
To clarify and remove all assumptions, when it's sent to the administration, we will be glad to send it to the council.
Perfect.
Unless there's any legal reason why there shouldn't be. I mean, they're part of the government.
Yep.
They... C.R.I., I'm reading their communication. They said that there may be some redactions that need to be made, but I can't imagine what we would be redacting.
Or commercially sensitive information. Okay.
So, we'd have to redact.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can you say that again? I couldn't hear you.
Redaction may be required for some commercially sensitive information. So, it could take a little bit longer for that redaction.
Okay. Thank you. And I assume they make that redaction, not you, us, anyone, right?
We're not making it.
Well, I believe it may be presented to the fiber attorneys. And if there's anything commercially sensitive that would maybe put fiber at a risk from its competitive advantage, so they would do the redacting of that.
Got it. Okay. That makes sense. Okay. So, whenever we get it Monday, so this upcoming Monday, correct?
It's my understanding.
That's your understanding. Veronica, can you go ahead and put it on the council agenda for the next city council meeting to have a public presentation on the findings of the forensic audit? Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I would like... I'd like the auditor to... He's out of state.
Well, he has an office in state. My recommendation would be if we... I mean, we need to reach out to the auditor. I share in your suggestion that we'd have the auditor here. So, assuming that his schedule on a two-week notice would be available, then otherwise, you're going to hear us present what we think the auditor is saying.
I want to hear from... Straight from the horse's mouth. So, we'll coordinate and just as soon as possible.
We'll request for two weeks. I mean, I think that's...
Perfect.
I think that's the best route. I agree with you.
And just let us know as soon as that's arranged, so we can get that on there.
Got it.
Thank you so much.
And I'm not sure if that would be an option, but we've had people call in, like from New Orleans or whatnot, to call in on the line if they're unable to travel due to COVID.
I want to log in person, look them in the eyes. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, let's move along. Thank you. Senator, please read item number eight.
L.U.S. Integrated Resource Plan.
Mr. Lo Do-Yo. Okay, there you go. You have the floor, sir.
All right. You're hot. All right, thanks. Members of the council, Lo Do-Yo, Interim Director of Lafayette Utilities, thank you for this opportunity to present this extremely important Integrated Resource Plan. It's something that L.U.S. team members and the consultants, Burns &amp; McDonald, have been working on for quite some time. The PowerPoint that you're about to see is meant to give an overall view of the plan, but if you look at the detail, you'll see just how much work was done in this plan. The team members are going to be acknowledged in a bit, but I want to personally thank them for their hard work and dedication. At the budget meeting last week, I told you guys just how special these guys, men and women over at L.U.S. are, and this is just another example of what their capabilities are, and you guys are going to be impressed. Can't say enough about them. L.U.S.'s future's in good hands. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff Stewart. He's our engineering power supply manager. Jeff, all yours.
Hi. Thank you, Lo. Jeff Stewart, engineering power supply manager. Thank you for the time tonight. This has been about 18, 19 months in progress. We started out knowing that we were going to do a very public process. We were going to bring everything to the public. We've had three customer meetings, stakeholder meetings since last year. When we finalized the report just a few weeks ago, we realized that we had some pretty major decision points we were reaching. What to do with the Rodomaker coal plant? How do we proceed with procuring renewable energy? And then some other topics that we need to discuss. What I made a pledge to you guys last year is that once we do finalize the report, we would bring it in front of you, let you see it, and then at a later date, maybe in two weeks, maybe in a month, you know, perhaps get some... A resolution on the agenda for your formal support that will help us move forward in procuring contracts, negotiating with the other owners of the coal plant and so forth. So, with that being said, let's get started. This is going to be a very high level. I won't get into the details of the IRP too much, but the conclusions are really what I wanted to present tonight and what the staff wants to present. Mission statement: High-quality, competitively-priced services exceed our customers' expectations. We also contribute to the well-being of the City of Lafayette. When we make decisions, whether it's performing the Integrated Resource Plan study or anything that we do, we always have that in mind, high-quality service, low rates, and with a top-notch customer service behind it. And so, any recommendations we make today is with our customers in mind. Integrated Resource Plan process, the largest part of it really is data gathering. There's a lot of information to get from within our organization, our financial data, our operation statistics, investigating and researching our current technology, our current assets on the books, also looking out to the industry and seeing what's available to us as far as renewable technologies, you know, battery storage, demand response, some things that are out there that customers are becoming more aware of and useful toward it. But, you know, we have to take the whole picture, figure out what our forecast will be. You know, our customers in 2020 use a lot less electricity than they did in the year 2000. People are more efficient. People are more aware of their consumption habits. And so, we take all those things, fuel prices in the future. We combine them all, and we develop scenarios and sensitivities, high gas prices, low gas prices. Is the market going to be flooded with renewables? Are we going to hang on to some vintage units? Those types of things are gathered and analyzed throughout this process. Then we do a kind of an economic screening to make sure that we're not going to suggest something that's going to raise rates by 40% or 50%. We want to be reasonable in some of our assumptions and some of our recommendations. And then ultimately, reproduce a power supply plan. The plan itself is a recommendation. We have the opportunity to present to you, and then the city council will have the ability to act on whatever you see fit. We certainly are open to any suggestions moving forward. The plan is published on our website, and I'll give the address later. It's 400-something pages, so, you know, I'd stick with the executive summary if you want. But anything is on the table as far as moving forward. Just know that what we've studied to date is going to be what we recommend as our path. It's pretty aggressive in some instances, but it's also, you know, kind of a changing. You know, it's a new decade, new era of electric utilities. We do need to adapt with it. The IRP itself is a decision-making tool. It's not going to tell us, you know, "L.U.S., you have to do these, or you're going to suffer some economic loss." It's recommendations based on all the analysis, and so it helps us make decisions. The decisions lie within this council auditorium, and so that's what we were here tonight presenting. And we're not making decisions 20 years from now. We're making short-term decisions that set us up to make good decisions in the future. So, we're going to make some really good decisions immediately. That's going to set us up to continue to make good decisions along the way. Our obligations are a couple of things we have to do. Number one is capacity. We're members of MISO, and that map you see is a MISO footprint. We're Zone 9, the red area in Louisiana. We have to have adequate resources to provide for our demand, our peak. There are rules and formulas around that, but certainly, our obligation is either by owning the generation yourself, contracting with somebody else, or doing some type of customer program, demand response, where we can reduce our peak on the customer side. That capacity can be long-term, short-term. Obviously, if you own a generation unit, it's a long-term commitment. We also have the ability to do short-term capacity to make up some shortfalls that we have today. And not all power plants are equal. Not all power plants are equal in dispatchability. That means if I have a gas supply coming into a generating plant, I can almost dispatch that any way I want to. If I have a coal pile sitting in the yard, I can almost dispatch a coal unit. Renewables takes, you know, some act of the weather and other things. You need wind for, obviously, wind turbines, and you need sunlight for solar. So, they also have capacity credit differences, and that's a little bit more complicated that I wanted to get into tonight, but basically, not all generation is created equal. We also have to provide the energy itself, the electricity that you use at your home and business when you, you know, turn on your light switch or you crank your air conditioner up. You know, we have to provide that electricity to your house. There's two obligations that we have, capacity and energy. Again, we can have a number of options to get that energy self-generation, go into the MISO market. And the MISO market isn't MISO dictating things. MISO set up a bunch of rules that we follow, that all utilities in the area follow. The utilities themselves dictate the market, so supply, demand, price, and so forth. We also have to be compliant with regulations. Environmental regulations was a big factor in this study process, and we'll get to that momentarily. We also, if there are renewable mandates, whether it's utility-wide, statewide, Louisiana does not have a renewable portfolio standard today. But certainly, we want to investigate those opportunities when they arise. We partnered with Burns &amp; McDonald for this project. You can see, it's hard to read from the audience here, but you could see the number of industries that Burns &amp; Mack is active in, even roads and highways and some other things. But what that tells us is when we do contract with them for a study like this, they have a really broad knowledge. They have an understanding of the industry. They can take that knowledge from throughout their firm and bring it in to give us good advice, good numbers, good analysis going forward. I mentioned the environmental rules really dictated a lot of our decisions within this IRP. There are some rules that were updated late in 2019 that caused us to pause what we were doing and study, specifically study those rules. And what happened was, after analyzing that, doing the economics, looking forward another seven or eight years, we determined that the coal-fired operation at Rodomaker is no longer economic beyond 2027. And why 2027? It's because there are some rules in place, compliance deadlines, that trigger certain capital investments. And in order to avoid those capital investments, you have the opportunity to retire the coal-burning piece of that plant. We have not analyzed what to replace it with. We have really two options to bring the coal plant out of commercial operation. Convert it to natural gas, which is an option. It costs money to do so, but it is an option. It's built for that. Or retire the unit outright. If we convert it to natural gas, we have the resource. It's the same resource in place, just a different fuel source. If we retire it, we have to replace it, and that's where you could see significant dollar investments in the future, upwards of hundreds of millions of dollars. Does it scare me? That price is a big price tag. It doesn't scare me to look at it, because, you know, that's going to be what it takes to get there, and we do have some flexibility in the way our finances line up, that we'll have some options in the future. But we're not ready to make those decisions today. What we're ready to recommend is that we retire that unit from coal after the year 2027 in order to comply with some compliance deadlines and to follow through with the cheapest and most economic path forward. That will require a few more steps. We'll have to meet with the owners. We're part owner of the unit. We're 50% owner of the unit. CLECO is a part owner. They own 30%, and they operate the facility. And LIPA, Louisiana Energy and Power Authority, which is a joint action agency representing 17 municipal utilities, is a 20% owner. We'll have to make those decisions as a group of owners, and we plan to begin meeting with them in the coming weeks. So, power supplies. I... You know, this was... We debated putting this on the slide because there's a lot of stuff up there, but I want to highlight a few things. Number one, look in 2027. The coal unit is shown as retired in every path that we analyzed. Either the coal unit is converting to natural gas, or the coal unit, the entire unit is being retired. The second thing is, you look at the years 2021 through 2025, and we are recommending 250 megawatts of solar generation. That could be done through purchase power agreements. That could be done through some other mechanisms. But just to give you some perspective, our peak is around 500 megawatts in the City of Lafayette. 250 megawatts would be a 50% take, which is amazing to us. Right now, we have a 50-megawatt renewable contract that expires at the end of December. This would be a pretty large moment for us, a pretty large contract, but one that makes sense for us, one that's the right opportunity for us. We feel like the timing is perfect for something like this. The megawatts themselves, the 50 megawatts per year are not limited by 50 megawatts per year. So, our goal is to submit an RFP for any responses that we can get by the end of this year. We want to put that on the streets and start negotiating contracts, get some responses, see where we can go with this. Doesn't mean we're going to limit ourselves to 50. We could go up. It could be whatever the developer has on the books that they want to submit as a potential project. So, we're going to give ourselves enough flexibility. Now, when we enter into a contract, hopefully, it doesn't mean our solar energy is going to come day one. There are some things, they still... Sometimes you have to construct the facilities in advance, so we may not take energy day one, but we want to get that contract in place to begin receiving that energy. And then the other highlight in 2028, it just gives you options for how to replace the coal unit itself. And you'll see path number three, it's convert to natural gas. The other options, we've looked at in the past, and we will look at again in the coming years. What do we want to do with that unit, and how do we replace such a large resource on our system? Here's another... It could get complicated, but I want to concentrate on two pieces. Years 2021 through 2027, you see that blue shade. The blue shade, we are generation short today. We're capacity short today. We have to contract for about 80 megawatts to make up our resource adequacy. We retired the bone-in units in 2017, and that took away some of our capacity availability. So, we went out and contracted for that shortfall. We still have a shortfall today. The only way to remove that shortfall is to build something or to go out and get a long-term contract that would cover that shortfall. When you look at 2028, you see this orange-pink shade. The difference between our resources and our requirements got a lot bigger. That tells... It shows that Rodomaker went off the books. This is really graphical, just to show you the impact of removing Rodomaker from our portfolio. It's going to be a big decision. It's going to be a big investment in the future. So, it's about half of our resources, basically. And so, you'll see the shortfall goes from 80 megawatts to over 300 megawatts during that time period. So, there's a large amount that we have to make up. Here just shows the renewable additions. Again, we're not limiting ourselves to 50 megawatts per year. We could submit an RFP and get something for 150 megawatts this year. We may come to the council, recommend approval to execute, and we'll have 150 megawatts on the books. And when we look at these renewables, they're not one year at a time, two years at a time. We're looking at 20-year-type contracts, something that's going to give the developers some confidence that there's a financial backer to their project, but also give us some stability in what our fuel cost could be, because typically, these things, we either Because typically, these things, we either have a flat cost through the life of the contract or a small escalator over time. So, we'll know going into any fiscal year what a certain percent of our fuel cost will be, which give us some elimination of risk for the energy market. And again, retire the coal portion of Rodomaker in 2027 and replace it in 2028. Here's a chart that I think a lot of people will enjoy. Our carbon footprint, you'll see after 2027, it drops off pretty significantly. That just shows two different gas generation options. The first option, it's a simple-cycle gas turbine and the second option is combined-cycle. In our dispatch models, we're showing a little bit more generation from the combined-cycles because of the economies and the way the market dispatches. So, you're going to have a little bit more output from that unit versus a simple-cycle unit. So, that's why that carbon footprint's a little higher than the first option, but drastically reduced from what we're doing today with a coal-burning plant. So, the conclusions and recommendations are these. Work with the joint owners, that's CLECO and LIPA, to determine Rodomaker's future and potential end-of-life options. That's, you know, there's a lot of steps to go through, MISO approval. EPA has to approve our plan if we would go down that path, so we do have some steps to take and that's why we're giving ourselves a few years here in advance of shutting down a unit to do so. Begin engineering and feasibility studies for repurposing the dock Bonein facility. We have not generated from that plant since late summer 2013. We went into economic suspension in 2014. We retired the unit in 2017. It doesn't produce megawatts today. It doesn't produce electricity today, but we have a almost brand-new electric substation next to it and we have plentiful gas supply interconnected with it. So, if we were to repurpose it for one of those replacement options that we showed earlier, that would be a prime location, at least a first choice for us to explore. So, I'd like to get ahead of that and say, what can we do at Bonein? And then, as we go through the next couple of years, figure out what's the best option for us. We'll already know what we can and can't do at that facility. It's been a generating station since the 60s. You know, we'd like to turn it into another generating facility in the future. Third is, conduct a power supply request for renewable energy. This is the last couple of slides that we showed, 50 megawatts per year over five years for a total of 250. We're in the process now of trying to develop an outline of what we'd like to do, hopefully hit the streets in the next few weeks with a proposal in the next couple of months, and then have some type of contract ready to be approved by city council at the end of this year or beginning of 2021 for a future in-service date. We'll also take a look at the rates. What is the retirement of Rodomaker going to do to our rates? That's a long-term plan, right? If we do something major, like invest in a new facility, you're looking at major bond issue, something that we've done in the past and will do again in the future, but we just need to make sure what the rate impacts are going to be because we are sensitive to our rates. I mean, we showed last week, we have among the lowest rates in the area. We want to continue that tradition into the future. Continue to monitor the overall electric industry, including new technologies, also environmental regulations. Those change, it seems like, with every presidential election, so we'll be very mindful of the upcoming regulations, the ones that are on the books today, but also ones that are in the future. And then, we'll have to come back and do this entire process again in the coming years. The electric industry is really changing a lot for us over time. I mentioned earlier, consumption is being, you know, the consumption by our customers are changing, but also just technologies out there. What is alternative today will be mainstream in a few years and so, we need to update this plan ever so often. We'll have some big decision points in the future. The final report, which I said is over 400 pages long, a bunch of other IRP documents are located on our website under the Electric section. We have an IRP dedicated page. We had a virtual meeting on June 30th. That entire presentation is about an hour and a half long, is also located on there. It's also on YouTube, if anybody's interested in watching that. I haven't watched it. Again, I don't like to hear my voice recordings, but it's there in case you have any questions about it. There's details there. Certainly, we'll continue to take questions from the council throughout this process and anytime y'all have something, you can give us a call or shoot us an email and we'll respond accordingly. This plan was performed. I mentioned over a few different public meetings over time that we had 10 people, you know, really devoted to this and these are the LUS employees. You can see their job titles, a good cross-section of employees. We had regulatory, we had rate analyst, we had, you know, power plant people, we had substation people, TND. It was a really good mix of perspective and only two of us had performed one of these IRPs in the past. And so, we had a lot of new faces, new perspective. That helped shape, I think, kind of the newness of what our IRP looks like today. So, certainly, a lot of credit goes to these employees and even some of their staff members who worked really hard over the last 18, 19 months to come to the conclusions that we're at today. And of course, Burns &amp; McDonald, Mike and Kyle, were very instrumental. They've done dozens of these in their career and they helped us along, educated us along the way too. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we have to learn and it certainly helped having an experienced, you know, consulting firm along with us. With that, I'll take any questions, answer anything you have. Otherwise, we will probably be more engaged with the council in the coming months as we accomplish some of these tasks or at least get started on some of these tasks that we've recommended.
Turn to the screen. Went out. Okay, there we go. Any public comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Andy Nakane. I want to thank you all.
Well, first, I want to thank you for this information and the second thing I want to say is more power to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any public comments? Okay, let's move along.
Thank you.
We do have a public comment. We have a call-in.
A call-in? Okay. Hold on a second, Jeff. We have a call-in.
Next speaker is Dr. Michael Walden. You may begin speaking, Dr. Walden.
Hi, I'm Mike Walden. I am resident of City District Number Four and I wanted to make a comment today thanking LUS for involving the public. And it certainly is different from the way IRPs were done in past years. In past years, members of the public who are interested in this have asked to be involved and asked to be informed and we haven't really been given that opportunity. So, I'm very grateful to being kept in the loop in terms of what was happening and LUS listening to our comments. I have one particular comment for the mayor and city council, and that is that of the many parameters going to the IRP, a very important one is the discount rate. And the discount rate is really a policy decision, not a technical or engineering decision. Many cities have a policy set for what discount rate will be used in future planning and a lot of cities set a zero discount rate. The discount rate is like an interest rate, except it's negative and it makes future values go down. So, for example, if you use a 4% discount rate, which is what was originally in the IRP, within 10 years, a dollar is only worth 66 cents and within 20 years, it's worth 44 cents. So, many cities don't feel that that's appropriate. It makes future money less important. Conservatives often dislike it because it tips the scale towards borrowing instead of paying as you go. Liberals often don't like it because it doesn't promote sustainability to have a discount rate. So, I believe that it's appropriate for the mayor and the city council to provide your guidance to IRP and to the IRP team at LUS to tell them what you believe is an appropriate discount rate to be used in all city planning. Should we be discounting by 4% or 2% or not use a discount rate at all? I would support the idea of not having a discount and using 0% as a discount rate. Thank you and thank you for all your hard work as council members and mayor. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
There are no other speakers.
All right, let's move along. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Oh. Hold on a second. Don't sit yet, Jeff. Go ahead, Mr. Lazar.
Real quick. Mayor President, since we're on LUS, let's, two quick questions. We're talking about moving forward with this plan. Could you give us an update as to where we are in finding a new consultant engineer?
Yes. So, technically, our current consulting engineer is still our consulting engineer. Now, they did wrap up their duties for this year, but from a technical standpoint, they are still our consulting engineer. Have we sent out formally our RFP? We're dominoing it? We're passing it now? Okay.
And I actually, just this evening, since we've been sitting in here, received the timeline for the RFP from the attorneys and we're progressing on it. We're moving forward. We're on a good timeline. So, we should have that wrapped up by the end of the year, December, November.
Wrapped up in terms of selecting somebody, you mean?
Correct. Correct. The whole process taken care of.
So, Nugent's going to continue to operate as our consulting engineers until such time as we find somebody new?
Nugent is our consulting engineer and I believe they still have one outstanding task that they're working on. And certainly, Nugent Engineers is certainly open to apply to our RFP, RFQ. I forget which one we're doing.
RFP. Just kind of concern.
Thank you.
As to the status.
No concern. There's, we are, there is zero gap in consulting engineer. We are fully engineered up.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any more question from council members? Okay. Mr. Mayor President? Yeah?
It's a CFO wants to speak.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Sure. Let's move along. Ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing and speaker from a forum are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The follow, the five-minute rule does apply. Cindy, please read item number nine.
City Ordinance 652020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $159,964 received from the Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department.
Motion, and second please. Motion by Mr. Andy Nakane, second by Ms. Liz Ebert. Any council discussion? Mr. Nakane.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear that this is emergency money coming down from the feds for COVID funding?
Right, this is COVID, this is a COVID grant that helped me.
Thank you for application. And it's to be used toward salaries, more than likely, overtime, things that have been paid there or?
It's more in reimbursements, I understand.
More reimbursement, money we've already spent. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, call for the vote for council to adopt the ordinance.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Announcement of vacancies on board and commission. Cindy, please read, please.
A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of September 1st, 2020. This is a one-year term. Applicants must be dieticians. A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of September 1st, 2020. This is a two-year term. Applicants must be medical doctors. A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of September 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. Applicants must be community organizers. A vacancy exists on the Evangelion Throughway Redevelopment Team as of January 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Evangelion Throughway Redevelopment Team as of September 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Lafayette Waterworks District South Board as of September 1st, 2020. This is a three-year term. Applicants must be district residents. A vacancy exists on the Highman Performing Arts Center and Frem F. Bostani Convention Center Board for the remainder of an unexpired four-year term through November 30th, 2023. A vacancy exists on the Transportation Policy Committee, the governing authority of the Metropolitan Planning Organization for an indefinite term as of September 1st, 2020. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above voluntary vacancies must be a registered voter and a resident of Lafayette Parish. Yearly ethics training for all appointees is required as is financial disclosure under certain circumstances. Resumes are to be forwarded to Veronica L. Williams, Clerk of the Council, P.O. Box 4017-C, Lafayette, Louisiana 70502, or email to bclaughia@lafayette.gov no later than noon Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, with appointments to be made at the September 1st, 2020 regular meeting of the Lafayette City Council.
Okay, move along. Okay, consider appointments by council as a whole to board and commission. Cindy, please read number 18.
Appointment to the Highman Performing Arts Center and Frem F. Bostani Convention Center Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. Applicants must be a minority as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute 382233.2.
Ms. D., can you read the resume received for consideration?
Resume received for consideration is from Jennifer Randall Thor and Allison Brandon.
Need a nomination? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Ebert.
I'd like to nominate Allison Brandon.
Okay, any more nomination?
In the 705 and LIE, the Leadership Institute of Academia, they both signed in to support Allison Brandon.
Okay. Council discussion? Okay, you did already the public comment. Okay, call for the vote.
District Five. District One.
Brandon.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Brandon.
District Four.
Brandon.
Allison Brandon is appointed. Appointment to the Highman Performing Arts Center and Frem F. Bostani Convention Center Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term.
Resumes received for consideration or from the remaining resumes, Ted Rishort, Jennifer Thor, Cleve Gaspar.
Any nomination? Mr. Nakane? Any public comments?
No, no, sir.
Please vote, please.
District One.
Gaspar.
District Two. District Two.
Gaspar.
District Three.
Gaspar.
District Four.
Gaspar.
District Five.
Gaspar.
Cleve Gaspar is appointed. Appointment to the People's Safety Initiative Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a three-year term. Applicants must be mental health therapists.
Resumes received for consideration or from Cleely Swallow and Dwayne Jacobs.
Ms. Ebert.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Swallow.
Mr. Lazar.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jacobs.
Any more nominations? Public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote.
District Two. District Three.
Swallow.
District Four.
Oh, sorry, Jacobs.
District Five. District One.
Jacobs.
Dwayne Jacobs is appointed. Appointment to the Lafayette Economic Development Authority Board as of August 4th, 2020, for three years, the remainder of an unexpired four-year term. Applicants must be black citizens.
Okay, nomination, please. Let's see, hold up, hold up. Mr.?
I need to see the listing.
Yeah, right.
Oh, all 20 of them?
Resumes received for consideration or Jamal Taylor, Wayne Phillips, Michelle Robethan, Phyllis Mouton, Dana Phillips, Erica Fox, Desiree Provost, Benjamin Quarter, Reed Bro, Josh Edman, Africa Daphne, Sherelle Castile, Mary Cook, Keith and Doming, Chelsea Zeno. And before you make nominations, 705 and LIE signed in to support Michelle Robinson, Robethan, and Marjorie Broussard signed in to support Jamal Taylor. We do have speakers, before you make nominations, scheduled to speak on this. First speaker is Devon Norman. First speaker is Devon Norman.
Good evening, everybody. It has been a long night. First, I just want to say thank you to the council for having me, the mayor president, who's not in the room. I really wish that these city council meetings, meaning that we're in the city of Lafayette, would be first, so that way our people wouldn't be exhausted and waiting for these moments. But on, I would like to rise on behalf of Jamal Taylor and say that I would recommend to the council that you all, you know, accept him, because I believe that it is time for new leadership in our oversight, young leadership, those who can understand the struggle, he's very well educated, someone who I can consider to be not too much older mentor than myself. And I believe that in these times, most definitely, we need leaders who are bold, who are thorough, leaders who are educated, and leaders who are seeking out to find the desires of the people. He's someone who's very active in the community, who's very, who's very passionate about what he does for the people. So I would encourage the council to recommend it, and I also just want to thank you all for your leadership in these times. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, Jamal Taylor.
It's okay. Good evening. Blessed is he who is brief. Do what's right by you, do what's right by our community. I just sat behind Ms. Mouton, she's a wonderful applicant, I heard some other wonderful names. I would encourage you all to recognize how important this appointment is. As an educator, I think that I would add a unique perspective to lead a, and in that, I think that education is a major driving component of our economy. And so I would appreciate your support and your vote on this evening, thank you.
Next speaker is Wayne Phillips, and he is on the phone, he's a caller. Mr. Phillips, you may begin your, you may begin speaking.
Good evening. As previously stated, my name is Wayne Phillips. Please allow me just a little bit of time to tell you something about myself. I am a lifelong resident of Lafayette. I have been married to the former Geneva Ladette for more than four years. We have two adult children and three grandchildren. Geneva and I are longtime parishioners of St. Patrick Catholic Church. I am a graduate of Lafayette High School and USL, now ULL, graduating with a degree in Business Administration. In addition, I have taken a number of postgraduate business classes at LSU, as well as attending a number of business seminars. I have proudly, proudly worked for nearly 39 years for one of the top 10 employers in Lafayette, that being Slimco. I currently head the company's Economic Development Department, as well as its Regulatory and Governmental Affairs Department, making me uniquely qualified to sit on the leaderboard. I know how important business is to our community. Not only our current businesses, many who have been struggling due to this pandemic, but the recruitment of new businesses as well. Business is the lifeblood of our community, and may I repeat that? Business is the lifeblood of our community. I am pleased and honored to be a resident of Lafayette, and I would be pleased and honored to represent the African-American community on this prestigious board. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. No other speakers.
Okay, open for nomination, Mr. Lazar?
Mr. Chair, do we have to, do we have to buzz in to make it, to speak or to make a nomination?
Yes.
We do? Okay, that's fine, just curious. I would like to nominate Ms. Phyllis Mouton.
Okay, Ms. Mouton, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, I would like to nominate Mr. Wayne Phillips.
Any more nominations? No more nomination, okay, it's call for the vote?
District three?
Phillips.
District four?
Phillips.
District five?
Mouton.
District one?
Mouton.
District two? Wayne Phillips is appointed. Appointment to the Bayou Vermillion District Board as of October 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term.
Any nominations, please, from the council?
Uh, resumes. Resumes received for this consideration are from Catherine Como, Kathleen Espinoza, Jason Sullivan, Macklin Wiltz, Holden Hogot, Zo Huvall, Henry Ebert, and Ross Cottrell.
Okay, nomination, okay, Ms. Cook?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Catherine Schuffler Como, please. And she is the incumbent.
Yes, she is the incumbent. Mr. Nakane?
Mark Wiltz.
Any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote?
District four?
Como.
District five? District five?
Wiltz.
District one?
Wiltz.
District two?
Wiltz.
District three?
Como.
Mark Halen Wiltz is appointed. Appointment to the Lafayette Science Museum Advisory Board as of December 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term.
Resumes received for consideration are from Camilla Mouton, Angela Cringe, Brandy Clay, Jeremy Sweeney, Igor Omar Begovic, Michael Shearer, Mindy Dago. Jeremy Sweeney is the incumbent.
Okay, so Jeremy is the incumbent?
Yes.
Any nomination, Mr. Nakane? Mr. Nakane?
You.
You will?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
You were still buzzed in for last time, that's why. Oh, okay, I didn't realize.
Okay. Mr. Lazar?
Uh, I'm sorry. Brandy Clay.
Ms. Cook?
Should I throw a third name in there, Sweeney, Jeremy Sweeney, the incumbent? Yeah.
We have some more, we have some more.
Yes, do next.
Yeah, okay. Just do these two then.
Okay, yes, okay. So Ms. Cook, we drew her motion. Okay, any public comments? No comments, okay. Call for the vote?
District five?
Clay.
District one?
Clay.
District two?
Green.
District three?
Green.
District four?
Clay.
Brandy Clay is appointed. Appointment to the Lafayette Science Museum Advisory Board as of February 1st, 2019. This is a four-year term.
Resumes received. Resumes received for consideration are from the remaining resumes, Camilla Mouton, Angela Cringe, Jeremy Sweeney, Igor Omar Begovic, Michael Shearer, and Mindy Dago.
Okay. Ms. Cook?
I'm gonna do Sweeney again.
Sweeney again, okay.
Try that one again.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Ebert?
I'll wait till next time to nominate Cringe, but I'll go with Sweeney as well.
Okay. Any more nomination? That's it for nominations? Okay, council, well, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote?
District one?
Sweeney.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Sweeney.
District four?
Sweeney.
District five?
Sweeney.
Jeremy Sweeney, Sweeney is appointed. Appointment to the Lafayette Science Museum Advisory Board as of February 1st, 2021. This is a four-year term.
Resumes received for consideration from the remaining resumes are Camilla Mouton, Angela Cringe, Igor Omar Begovic, Michael Shearer, and Mindy Dago.
Okay, Mr. Lazar, nomination?
Angela Cringe.
Any more nominations? Council discussion, okay, the public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote?
District two?
Green.
District three?
Cringe.
District four?
Cringe.
District five?
One and all. District one?
Cringe.
Angela Cringe is appointed. Appointment to the Lafayette Science Museum Advisory Board as of September 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term.
Resumes received from consideration are the remaining resumes, Camilla Mouton, Igor Omar Begovic, Michael Shearer, and Mindy Dago.
Mr. Nakane?
Shearer.
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Ms. Camilla Mouton. Any more nomination? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote?
District three? District three?
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Green, I'm going, uh, uh, Michael Sherber.
District four?
Mouton.
District five?
Mouton.
District one?
Mouton.
District two?
Shearer.
Camilla Mouton is appointed. Appointment to the Evangelion 3A Redevelopment Team as of January 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term.
Resumes received for consideration are from Kevin Blanchard and Brandy McKeller.
Do we have any incumbent on that?
Not on this one.
I thought Kevin was, okay. Okay, let's get the nomination, Mr. Lazar?
Uh, Kevin Blanchard.
Mr. Nakane?
This was a wash.
Okay, no problem. Okay, public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote?
District four?
Blanchard.
District five?
Blanchard.
District one?
Blanchard.
District two? District three? Kevin Blanchard is appointed. Appointment to the Evangelion 3A Redevelopment Team as of January 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term.
The resume, the resume received for consideration is the remaining resume of Brandy McKeller.
Any council discussion? Okay, okay, nomination is?
I'm sorry, and it's Brady McKeller, I'm sorry.
Brady, so he's the only one on there, so any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote?
District five? District five?
Brady.
District one?
Brady.
District two? District three?
Brady.
District four?
McKeller.
M. Brady McKeller is appointed. Appointment to the Lafayette Waterworks District North Board as of June 1st, 2020. This is a five-year term, applicants must be district residents.
Um, I have a question for legal. All three of these appointees were appointed by the parish council to the same board, so... We can't appoint her? Well, I'm sorry, I see, I had to go back to the parish board appointment, and it appears as though Bradley Rocka was not appointed to... So you got Harold Ebert for parish, Robert?
Bradley isn't incumbent, is he an incumbent for the parish or for the city?
Well, he's an incumbent for this, listed for this board, for the city. But he was not, it appears as though he was not appointed to the parish council. Yes.
That's easy, huh? Okay, so advice from legal?
Well, the only one left is Bradley Rocka.
Okay, that's the only one left. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Veraka, move on.
You have to vote on Mr. Rocka.
Okay, vote for Mr. Rocka.
District one?
Yes.
District two? District two?
You can't do that, you don't pay any attention?
No, Rocka.
They were appointed to the parish coun, from the parish council.
Where the electric power?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Rocka.
District five?
Rocka.
Bradley Rocka is appointed. Appointment to the Cadence Dom Commission as of September 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term.
Resumes received for consideration are from George Favolora, Jan Scott Reschard, and Evan Boudreaux. George Favolora is the incumbent.
Okay, taking nomination, Ms. Cook?
Uh, George Favolora.
Any more nomination? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Let's vote on Mr. George.
District two?
Favolora.
District three?
Favolora.
District four?
Favolora.
District five?
Favolora.
District one?
Yes.
George Favolora is appointed. Appointment to the Board of Zoning Adjustment of July 1st, 2020. This is a five-year term, applicants must be a minority as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute 382233.2.
Resumes received for consideration are from Ferdinand Perez Viart, Melissa Lowland, and Lashonda Rochan. The 705 and LIA did sign in in support of Melissa Lowland, and Melissa Lowland did sign in to request your support. Melissa Lowland is the current alternate, too.
Okay, nominations, Ms. Ebert?
Melissa Lowland.
I see there's no more nomination, any public comments?
No, sir.
Let's vote on Melissa.
District three? District four? District five? District one?
Yes.
District two? Melissa Lowland is appointed. Appointment to the Board of Zoning Adjustment of February 1st, 2020. This is a three-year term, this is an alternate position.
Uh, resumes received for consideration are Ferdinand Perez Viart and Lashonda Rochan and Jim Parker.
Nomination, Ms. Ebert?
Lashonda Rochan.
Any more nominations? Mr. Nakane?
Mr. Viart.
Mr. Who, okay, Viart, been in there, so, okay. No more nominations, that's it, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote?
District four?
Rochan.
District five?
Fernando.
District one?
Fernando.
District two?
Fernando.
District three?
Rochan.
Fernando Perez Viart is appointed. Appointment to the Keep Lafayette Beautiful Board as of December 1st, 2020. This is a two-year term.
Resumes received from, for consideration are from Carol Trossclaire, Denise Richard Langclose, Katie Dupree, Linda Diane Kirksey, Jamie Ebert, Ian Rudolph. The incumbent is Denise Langclose, and I was hesitating because Carol... Carol Trossclaire was appointed by the parish council to a board, and Jamie Ebert was appointed to this board by the parish council as well. So we would eliminate those two names. Uh, Jamie Ebert and Carol Trossclaire. Also, the 705 and LIA did sign in to support Katie Dupree, and Katie Dupree did sign in to request your support.
Okay, nomination, Ms. Cook?
I'd like to nominate Katie Dupree.
Any other nomination? Public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote for Katie.
District five?
Dupree.
District one?
Yes.
District two? District three? District four?
Dupree.
Katie Dupree is appointed. Appointment to the Keep Lafayette Beautiful Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a two-year term.
The resumes received for consideration are the remaining resumes, Linda Kirksey and Ian Rudolph. Carol Trossclaire, Denise Langclose, Katie Dupree, and Jamie Ebert has all, have all been appointed to boards.
Taking nomination, Ms. Cook?
So there are only two, Linda Kirksey and Ian Rudolph. So there are only two, Linda Kirksey and Anne Rudolph.
Hello?
Um, I nominate the, uh, Kirksey.
Wait, I may be, I may be, I may be in error, was Langclose appointed?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, Langclose, I am so sorry.
Yeah.
So one, and I'm doing this on the fly because you have to go back to the other board, and there's so many appointments, so many names.
So can you read them again, who's, uh...
Yes, Denise Langclose, Linda Kirksey, and Anne Rudolph.
I want to nominate Langclose, please.
Okay, Ms. Cook nominates Langclose. Mr. Lazar?
Uh, Rudolphs.
And Mr. Lazar nominated Rudolph. Any other nominations? Any public comments?
No, sir.
This is vote.
District one.
Uh, district one, uh, Langclose.
District two.
Langclose.
District three.
Langclose.
District four.
Langclose.
District five.
Rudolphs.
Denise Reschort Langclose is appointed. Appointment to the Lafayette Public Trust Financing Authority Board as of September 1st, 2020. This is a five-year term.
You can add that one.
Resume, resumes received for consideration are from Colina Andra Point, Stephen Sonier, Tim Metcalf, Ramon F- Fonseca, Orlando Cormier. Stephen Sonier is the incumbent, and Tim Metcalf signed in, uh, to request support or if you have any questions.
Okay, we'll start taking nomination, uh, Mr. Lazar, you have the floor?
Uh, Sonier.
Okay, Ms. A Bear?
Metcalf.
Any other nominations?
And may I add that 705 and LIA do support Stephen Sonier.
Okay, that's a public com- okay, let's call for the vote.
District two.
Metcalf.
District three.
Metcalf.
District four.
Sonier.
District five.
Sonier.
District one.
Sonier.
Stephen Luke Sonier Jr. is appointed.
I'd like to remind everyone that item number 36, Airport Commission, apartment is being withdrawn from consideration. Apartment, apartments by council members, mayor, president, and/or any other direct appointments authority. Cindy, please read.
Liz A Bear, District 3, appointed Vanessa Adamson to the Lafayette Advisory Commission on Crime Prevention for a nine-month term effective July 13th, 2020.
Okay, we'll continue moving along, introductory ordinance. I need a motion and a second from the council to introduce ordinance, items 38 through 41 in Global. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Andy Nakay. Cindy, please read items 38 through 41.
City ordinance 662020 in accordance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the South College Lift Station Upgrade Project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary land, surportutes, easements, rights of way, and other property rights on an amicable basis or through the use of the appropriation process if necessary. City ordinance 672020 in accordance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Codes as to reclassify the property of Matling Cove 2 LLC Case Number 0 in 2020 0015. Matling Cove 2 rezoning located generally west of North University Avenue, south of West Willow Street, and north of Matling Avenue, the particular parcel being rezoned from residential single-family to residential mixed. City ordinance 682020 in accordance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code and the official map of the city of Lafayette, providing for the annexation of additional land into the corporate limits of the city of Lafayette, Louisiana. Case number 0 in 2020 00133014, Verrill School Road Annexation located generally east of Sharpsburg Drive, south of Vincent Road, and west of Verrill School Road, and is signing a zoning classification of Mixi's Neighborhood District 4. City ordinance 692020 in accordance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette mayor-president to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Parish of Lafayette for the funding of the Temporary Branch Office of the Lafayette Parish Registrar of Voters at the Martin Luther King Recreation Center for conducting early voting and amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget and capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by allocating funds dedicated to the Clifton Cheniere Cultural Plaza Project from the city of Lafayette to the Parish of Lafayette's General Fund to provide funding needed for said Temporary Branch Office of the Lafayette Pub- Lafayette Parish Registrar of Voters for conducting early voting.
Okay, uh, any comments from the public on the above introductory ordinance?
Yes, sir, all comments are related to item number 41, which is the Martin Luther King Early Voting Location, um, signed in, we had one person in support, uh, call-ins to the office, we had nine people calling in support. We do have one speaker on the phone. Joan Savoy, Ms. Savoy, you may begin your comments.
Thank you, um, good evening, Mr. Mayor President and council members. Uh, my name is Joan Savoy, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to express my support for this proposal that I believe will lead to improved access for Lafayette residents to exercise their right to vote. The addition of an early voting site at the Martin Luther King Center will ensure a large, fully accessible, cen- centrally located site that will increase turnout and reduce lines at the polls on Election Day. Early voting is ideal for voters who cannot guarantee they will have time off from work on Election Day, also for those who have transportation challenges that make it difficult to reach their polling location, and for those who have small children and need to arrange childcare on Election Day. Um, caregivers who cannot easily take hours out of their day to stand in line on Election Day also would benefit from this early voting location, and of course, those who have health conditions of their own and cannot handle Election Day crowds would benefit as well. The COVID-19 pandemic makes the need for early voting access even more urgent. Our local government has the responsibility to ensure that elections are safe, fair, and fully accessible for all. I encourage the city council to vote in favor of this ordinance to add this site for early voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, that's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any council discussion? Ms. Williams, any, okay, did the public comments, okay. I need a vote to introduce in Global item 38 through 41.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District two. The motion to introduce is approved.
City council meeting has been adjourned.